You gonna stay over here and attend?
The meeting is now called to order. Let us bow, head. This evening, I have a Father, we give thanks to you. We give you thanks for this day, because truly, this is the day that you have made, and we're going to rejoice and be glad in it. We ask Heavenly Father, as we conduct business for the city, that you allow your Holy Spirit to come and be with us, and help us to conduct the business in a decent manner. And we ask your blessings for each council member and their families, and for each of us. Be with us, and bless us, and continue to carry us on. And we'll be careful to give your name the glory, honor, and praise for which you do. For it's in your Son, Jesus' name, and we all say amen.
Amen.
Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Lord for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank you for attending your council meeting. We'd like to recognize any officials in the house. If so pleased, then do not move farther. Counsel, we would now entertain a motion for the adoption of the January 15th, 2015 minutes. Have you all had a chance?
I have some, um, I have some questions that I need to ask before we do the January 15th.
I believe we need to make a motion first, and then we can discuss them. How much of the motion is we adopting?
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Yes, you may discuss.
Discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion.
Go ahead. Everybody have a minute. Page six, paragraph two.
Page six, paragraph three. Paragraph two. What paragraph? It says council member. And it just says council member. So, I think that should've been council member.
Thank you, made that much. I can do that.
Page five. Paragraph, uh, six. That should be where it went over at the workshop. Went on that workshop, it should've been over. It went over there.
They just want to change the word "on" to "over." Is that what you're on where council member Whipple says, "So we went on at the workshop?"
Over there.
You just want to change "on" to "over."
So we done. Over there. Page thirteen. Paragraph eleven. I mean, paragraph one. Right down where council member said, council member Whipple said. I would, I would like to put that into reference, that I was talking to Mr. Cummins and Mr. Gordon from the Regent Commission.
Do you want me to add all that in there? What are you saying, you just want parentheses around that? Or you want to add it in there that I was, I, council member Whipple was talking?
Yeah, because sometimes when you don't put it in parentheses, you know, punctuation and, and writing sentences and stuff, that means a lot. Because sometimes when you read it, it might not sound like it do. When you're reading it, when you're reading it, it might sound different than what you hear on the record. Because from, uh...
What do y'all want to do?
A lot of times, we might have to, we might have to do that. Because it's been like several occasions where, you know, something was read, and it, and it mean, it might mean to me, like, I'm trying to put somebody down. But I'm not really trying to put nobody down. But I wanted to clarify that it's, it's not meant like that. And so, when you used to, don't put the right pronunciation or you don't get it, I mean, you're not...
You, you did say Mr. Cummins and who?
I was talking to Mr. Cummins, Mr. Cummins and Mr. Gordon. Hey, this is nice. The other man that was, uh, Villa George.
Matt Gordon.
Matt Gordon, okay, Matt Gordon. That's who I was talking to. I don't want it to make it seem like I was talking to the council people or anybody in the audience. Because it was just a question. And on page nineteen, paragraph two. Council member said, please see, council member Whipple said? Okay. I never did as a question. And see, you got a period at the end, so that makes a difference.
Well, you just kind of made like a comment. So, a lot of time when you listen, we don't know if you're asking a question or making a comment. So, I just write them like, "I understand and all of you."
Yeah, I, I know, but then it makes a difference, you know, if somebody else might be looking at it. I don't, see, man, you got a difference now.
Yeah, because you said, "Council member Whipple said, Mr. Eagle, Mr. Disney don't know anything about it." I mean, that's not answering the question.
But see, I did not say that, I did. What I said, I was asking them a question, and did they know anything about it? Because they was veteran, uh, council members, and I wanted to know, did they know anything about it?
That's not how I interpreted it off the...
See, that's what I'm saying.
Y'all gonna need to say, "I'm asking you a question."
Well, we might need...
We're gonna have to start doing all this detailed minutes?
Yeah, because see, see, we getting it off the paper, and then we getting it, you know, from the record. And so, that's what I am saying.
Oh, y'all having problems with my minutes?
Interpretation means a lot. And see, from what, that, to me, that sound like I'm trying to put them down. When I simply asked them a question, uh, and the question was asked. Uh, I, I want to, it's, this is a statement, but I asked a question.
Are y'all agreeing on all these changes?
I couldn't remember, if she said that, I don't have any problem with changing "don't" to "do you", and put a question mark at the end. I would agree with that.
Okay, yeah. Or rather than when she said, you may want to send council member?
Because what I was doing, I really wanted to know. I wasn't, you know, just saying that, I really wanted to know, that they know anything about it. Because the thing, I forgot what we was talking about, but I really wanted to know, since they was the veteran council.
So, in other words, you asked a question.
I asked them a question. I didn't tell, telling and asking, you know, make a difference.
And maybe next time, you should say, "I'd like to ask you a question," so I'll get it clear on here. This is extremely hard to do.
Okay, that's why it might be best if we do summary, instead of trying to write what's all on this record.
No, maybe you can't do summary, write it all.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with changing, you know, like I said, change "don't" to "do you", and put a question mark at the end, would that be sufficient?
Yeah, because I really was asking y'all a question.
Yes, that's my...
And I said like I was doing a statement. And on page... Twenty-five. And... Which paragraph? To start with paragraph nine, could've go on. And something of, was on there about our preacher said, and I don't remember saying, I know I didn't say anything about preacher. But I also want to say, I made a statement, uh, but I did not cast a yes vote. And nowhere in the ministry says that I cast a, a yes vote. When we was talking about paying those terms.
Pardon, now, you talking about on paragraph where it starts off, council meeting said, "I ask for a roll call vote"? Is that now?
Uh-huh.
I'm gonna have to dispute that, I do remember you saying yes.
Okay, you saying, "I said yes." I did say, "Yes, we need to pay our bills." But I didn't, I, I did not cast a yes vote, though. And nowhere in the ministry says that I cast a yes vote. And I went to look, I went to, went to look at that today. But, uh, to, uh, check the recorder, to listen to the recorder, to clarify that. And, but the clerk was busy at the time, so I have to do it another day.
You did say, you said, "So I am saying yes for the hundred fifty thousand."
Yeah, I, I said it. I, I said that, I said that. But it's nowhere in the ministry that I said I cast a yes vote.
Right here, but you said, "I am saying yes for the hundred fifty thousand."
Excuse me, she's talking, so, they are talking, so please, audience, be quiet. Thank you.
So, if you want to keep that in there, I would appreciate it, that if you would add and state that what I said, that I, that I am saying, that I made a statement, but I did not cast a yes vote. And that I did go to the city council. I made to the city hall today, and I wanted to listen at it to make, to clarify that I didn't. And I, you know, I didn't, didn't have time really to do it.
You came in real late to listen to it.
I cast it at four fifteen.
That was too late to listen to a two-hour council.
I didn't want it to, I, I just wanted, that was the thing.
I typed exactly what I heard on that paper.
But I will, I will come down.
But I can't add something to my minutes that was not said that night.
Okay, page four, but it's not in your minutes, there's nobody in the ministry that I see.
But I can't add anything, it's not already up there.
In page four, I mean, page thirty-four. Which paragraph? It's just a word in that one, so I think I'm just gonna skip that one, and go to page forty. Last paragraph. Where council member Whipple said, "Well, let's take, make a vote." I said, "Let's take a vote."
Is it that important?
Interpretation.
Change that one little word?
Yes, because interpretation.
Are you sure you said that word and not the other one? Where is it?
It was page forty.
Where in is that?
In the last, uh, last paragraph.
And what word was it that you were saying?
I said, "Let's take a vote." And then I made a motion.
Now, let's make a vote. In the first paragraph.
In the first, yes, okay. I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'd like to make a motion that, with corrections.
I made a motion, I'll, I'll restate my motion to, uh, accept the minutes with the corrections that we just agreed to.
All right, thank you.
Whoever's seconded would have to agree to the same thing.
Second motion. Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion?
All right, Mr. Small was saying it first time.
And that's who it would have...
Well, that's, well, that's, it don't matter.
He agrees with it.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, roll call.
No, I cannot approve the minutes, because I have not read them. And we got ninety-five sheets. And this is more like a transcript, and minutes, we need to sit down and figure out how we can minimize these. These are too many, and it takes too long to sit down and read. We need to come up with something to minimize them, because it's too many minutes. And I haven't had time to read them, so I cannot approve them.
Uh... What was your take of what's... Motion carried.
I make the motion that we adopt the January twelfth minutes at this time.
Well, let, let me sign.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know we're hasty, but we've got a while yet.
That's the next seven minutes.
Right, I think we'll get to it. I've got it.
And I made the motion. That's my prerogative to do that.
Right, but you will just wait up and let me sign off on this, counsel. We're moving right on. You just gotta be patient. All right, we've got January twelfth. This was a, a call meeting. Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, discussion.
Oh, may I say something? Oh, I was very sick when I was typing all these minutes. This is a lot of hard work. On the January twelfth minutes, I did notice some, um, some errors that I picked up on my own, and some help, some good friends. Um, on page eleven... Third paragraph from the bottom. Where it says, "Mayor says, 'But I've not received those.'" If you're going down, where it says, "That's a heritage tale," that should be a heritage trail. Um, on bottom, page thirteen. Um, next to the bottom paragraph, where it says, "Mayor, the ask council, we have that." That should be, "Mayor then asked." These are just little typos that I made. Top of page sixteen. The paragraph from the top, it had council being asked, that should be council member E asked. And then on page fourteen, everywhere you see the word Chevy, that should be capitalized Chevy truck. But that's just all nitty-gritty stuff that we found.
On page twelve.
Fourteen. Which, on page fourteen? But this is just some little things that, corrections that need to be made.
And which paragraph?
Fifth one from the top, on page fourteen. But we found them after I'd already mailed them out, so I just want to bring those to y'all.
Hey, we got one on page seventeen, too. Okay, one second. When we was talking about the, uh, about the trench, that people, first, which paragraph? Please. Paragraph, oh. Paragraph E seven. Uh, council member Whipple said, "They pick up the bottom over there." I said, "If they don't pick it up one day, they pick it up the next day."
You saying left the sinners out? You saying I left the sinners out?
Yeah, well, you put, you put, "They pick up the bottom over there." And it should've been, I said, "They pick up, the next day, they pick up." If they don't pick up trash one day, I said, "They get it, they get it the next day."
So, you want that sinners out again? You want a sinners out again? If they don't pick it up one day?
They, they say, "Take out, they do not pick up the bottom over there."
And that was in there.
Whipple said, "They pick up the bottom." I don't know what we was talking about, but I said, "If they pick up the trash, I do." If they don't pick it up one day, they will pick it up the next day.
Y'all want to take that sinners out, or leave it at the other?
I mean, really clearly, reading is just, what is it? Council member Whipple said, "They get, pick up the bottom." What bottom was it there?
It's that, that's what we say, it's a sin.
Who did not make it in the sentence? Now, what she just said, if they don't pick up...
I mean, it's insignificant anyway, because it was in the motion. No, it just, I mean, it's just, yeah, so if y'all want to add what I added...
I would just add it in, that's what I would do.
Right.
Pick us the next, eh?
Any further discussion?
I'm hearing my motion again, once again, to adopt the minutes with the corrections that we just made.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Roll call?
Aye.
The eyes have it. We will not have speaking out, so please, uh, this is not going to be asking tonight. There are those, and if they are acting out, we just have to escort them out. Entertain a motion for the January sixteenth.
I have a motion that we accept the January sixteenth minutes for the call meeting.
I'll second.
Discussion? Motion has been made and seconded, no discussion. Roll call?
Aye.
No, I haven't read them.
Aye.
Aye.
The eyes have it. As you see, we've, uh, the minutes are lengthy, but going to training, we've just got to find a way to have them minimized to a summary. That being said, I'd just like to add, before we, um, go into the, um, old business, I'd like to bring to your attention, counsel, the letter that we received regarding the audit. If you're looking at the packet, I placed one there for your information. This is from the Department of Audits and Accounts, non-profit and local government audits, to the Honorable Mayor and Members of Council, City of Gordon, regarding audit for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty fourteen. Honorable Mayor and Members of Council, your request for an extension to submit the above referenced audit report has been approved. The due date for this report is September thirtieth, twenty fifteen. Please note that this extension relates only to audit report submission... to the Department of Audits and Accounts, and does not change reporting responsibilities to other state or federal agencies. State law permits the state auditor to weigh the requirement for completion of the audit within one hundred eighty days of the fiscal year end if the audit is in the process of being conducted or will properly be conducted and of good cause is shown. However, no waiver may be granted for more than two successive years. Every effort should be made to file the required report within the one hundred eighty day deadline in future years. Please submit your audit report as soon as possible. If the report will be delayed past the extension date shown above, then please contact us by email or by telephone. Sincerely, Dove Perkel Jr., CPA, CFE, Certified Forensic Audit CGPF, the director. Also, you will note in your package, you have the energy excise tax receipt. We have a check from the commissioners that was received, I believe, to Deputy Clerk.
Yes, sir.
In the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars, eighty-two cents. And as of today, Deputy Clerk Halber has deposited this into the general fund. Also, you will see in your packet for the SPOS two thousand seven description, ballots today for the loan L one four W J. Says December twenty fourteen. It shows a balance on hand at seven hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars, ninety-one cents. The G for loan was paid January twenty seventh, any amount of fifteen hundred ninety-one dollars, thirty-eight cents. And C D B G face, which we'll get to, in the amount of nine hundred dollars. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Okay. We'll right along, just to let you know that. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to take a moment, in the interest, in the interest of transparency and honesty. After my election as your mayor, I started an investigation to find out what the most pressing issues of Gordon were. And was amazed to find the utter neglect and waste that was considered normal. I subsequently wrote a letter to the citizens of Gordon and tried to explain the problems I found. Naturally, I would address these issues. The top of the list was the water system. As I stated one year ago, Mr. John Holland has now validated my statement endorsed by EPA. And it states, Mayor Whipaloo, January twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen. Due to the recent EPA D notice of violations NOB and substandard operations and management of the city's water system, I'm no longer comfortable verifying the city's monthly water reports. He said in his twenty-five years of water utility management experience, he says he's yet to see a water system in such need of improvement and upgrades. It seems obvious to him, the system has been neglected for years with no plans to improve. And he goes on further to state, we would be glad to help the city when it gets serious about improving its water system. Sincerely, John Holland. And you all have that letter. And I'd just like to say, unfortunately, for the citizens of Gordon, charges were brought against me for discrimination, thereby sabotaging all my efforts to fix the water problem. As I've stated, there are many more defects in the city that I and counsel aim to fix. But there are some who are determined to prevent the city from moving forward or exposing where the money is going. Counsel will move forward to the new business. And to close out of the twenty-twelve. That'll be such hitting big. Thank you. As far as. We'll move right along with the budget. Is Mr. Daniel Cummins here tonight? Would you please come?
Evening, Mayor and Counsel. Just here to, I guess, report back and communicate on what's occurred since last week we all met together. At the advice of the Attorney's Office, we, you know, looked in again at the requirements for, you know, advertising the budget and things like that. And so what actually is on the agenda for today is something that ran in the newspaper this past Thursday, which is the formal presentation of the Library Fund and General Fund budgets to counsel from the mayor's office, which is outlined in GMA requirements. And so it doesn't require any action, but what you have in your packages is the General Fund and Library Fund budgets, the ones that we discussed and had tentative approval on several weeks ago. And so I wanted to make you all aware of that. Certainly, if you had any questions about that, be happy to answer those as well. These copies were provided, is that correct? They should be in there, that's correct.
All of them are plain numbers that we talked about last.
That's exactly right. Word for word.
Capital expenditure, everything.
Everything, everything as it was. And it has been made available for public review at City Hall as well.
And basically, the reason we're doing that, that is a state law. Our attorney pointed that out, you know, even though he was interrupted, but it is a state law.
That's correct. You know, this process.
Thirty-six dash eighty-one dash five, you know, and this is under D E. And that's exactly what it says. What we're doing tonight is to meet that fulfillment of the law.
Exactly right.
State law.
Yes, sir.
And not only is it state law, but it's in our charter too, so I had it here too. It's validated by the charter, so. I don't think it's nothing new that they don't know, the elder counsel, because prior to our coming, I mean, this should have already been taken care of.
Right, we supposed to have this back in October.
Exactly, but due to those not fulfilling what they're supposed to do, which is their obligation of a council.
Man's responsibility to do the vote.
Exactly, but it's the council, up to the council to vote and support it. So let's move forward.
We hadn't had one to vote on until then.
Exactly. It's simply. Counsel, what's you all's take? No, I'm saying for the interruption of giggling and carrying on.
Well, this is only a presentation, we don't have to, but there's no vote to be taken tonight. All this is just.
That's exactly right, so it's just a formalized presentation. You will notice the numbers are the same there. The total revenues for the General Fund budget were a million, six hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two. And then, you know, the expenditure is a million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred. And then transfers out to the Library Fund and Water Fund budget that make it a balanced budget. But you're correct, this doesn't require any action from counsel tonight. Just more or less a presentation, and any comments from counsel can be made about it.
Okay, so this, excuse me, this came out in our January sixteenth meeting. And what I think y'all, y'all wasn't here, you wasn't here at the meeting. And you later found it out. And that was the reason, I guess, for you to be back tonight. So if we had any question, it came up, when it should have came up in the meeting, that something was wrong. It should have came up in the meeting, in the meeting that we had at the call meeting. But it didn't, it came up after when you all was not here on the sixteenth. And so we're just glad that you all came back, and I hope if anybody have any questions, and if we doing anything's not correct, that they would tell you tonight, that is counsel will let you know tonight, you know, if anything, that they see any deficiencies. So thank you all. Thank you so much. And also, prior, before you leave, our next step, I'd see that you said it must be a made available budget for Thursday, I'm sorry, until February fifth. Would you elaborate on that too?
Sure, there's a required time for public review. And rather than do the minimum there, we decided that we should go ahead and advertise and have the budget available for public review from now until what is currently the scheduled public hearing, which would be this Thursday.
So that's open for the constituents to come in and hear.
That is correct.
Great. And the third step, it says there must be a formal presentation of the general fund. You want to elaborate on that?
That's what, that's what this is. This is just a formal presentation of the General Fund and Library Fund budget to counsel. So this is, this is what was, needed to be advertised and what was presented tonight.
Okay. And the fourth step?
Um, I believe the other step there would be the public hearing requirement, which we've talked a little bit about. It had to be advertised for a week prior to the public hearing. The notice in the paper did schedule the public hearing for this upcoming Thursday afternoon.
And it is in the newspaper this week?
It was in the newspaper this past Thursday, that's correct.
Great, thank you so much. And so step five?
Step five would be the formal adoption of the budget by counsel. That, there has to be a week in between the public hearing and that adoption date. The notice that went out set that date for a week from this Thursday. Those dates were based upon the fastest possible time that it could happen.
As required by the state?
That, no. Well, it's the fastest times that would follow the requirements. But there, you know, obviously there's some flexibility there as well. But those, that is the absolute fastest scheduled to do that.
Okay, any questions for the counsel? So certainly we are ready to go.
All right.
So that being a further, y'all have any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Cummins. Good job. Counsel, the next order of business is the discussion of the city budget. I'm sorry, the city Visa card. And I've given you all the information from Ms. Presses. And she's given me the stipulations, the requirements that it would take to. To complete this. I'd like to go over this with you all, because this is something that we need to go ahead and take care of. And she says, dear attention, Mayor Whipaloo, Mayor of the City of Gordon. And it's the credit card application. And she says they would need a copy of the minutes I've highlighted there, where the counsel has voted to open a credit card account with them. And once more again, are we going to go with the same credit limit that was previous? I have a copy of that attached to your information. And what, at what limits? And the city council will also need to vote and state in the minutes that they wish to cancel or either pay off the account. I know the last time we were here, we didn't have enough money. So now, you know, we all went to the mayor's day and, of course, with not having enough money supposedly, we took care of that, each of us, so. We've had the resolution presented by Attorney Boons at the last council meeting, that we've already got the credit card for the City of Gordon, so. Presented, so what's you all's take? We need to get this done expeditiously. And I have given you all a copy of the summary, so you'll have an idea of what's on hand, of what the ballot says at the present time. If you look over that. Here's a copy, you want to explain that.
You just asked for that? You asked for it?
I didn't have it.
I didn't look over it, because you just handed, provided the information to me, so you can explain to them whatever you need, because I don't know why you asked for it.
Well, I want to.
I was just honoring your request.
Yes, thank you so much, but even to explain the charges that are on here, you can explain that.
Well, you can give it and trade it. I mean, all it is.
Back in November, as it was, you know, we took a course, training, myself and counsel on the toes at St. Simon, Georgia. St. Simon Island. And that was in the amount of nine hundred forty-one dollars, thirty-seven cents. So we only spent the days that were assigned to us to go. We did not waste the city money as was printed and told. Okay, in the December twelfth, month of December, we have all of, as you see on your, is everybody on the same page?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, counsel. You've got your. Just go over and find your decent information, isn't it? So we all be on the same page. That way, everybody will know. We want to be transparent.
I can tell you, the amount that's owed now, V is four thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars, fourteen cents. And that's on the terminated credit card.
And so we know, we know that that expired December thirty-first of twenty fourteen. So we've got to move forward, because we've got June coming up and all the other dates and such. And that you all are scheduled for training, so we need to go ahead and take care of that. So we'll go ahead and get this cleared in the minute, so. What's you all's take, counsel? I was thinking that we, we set an amount for that last, at the last council, we want sixteen.
I know we did a resolution. I'll live where a policy on every, did we never agree to pay the credit card bill?
Right, we did agree, believe that was keeping at that same amount, which was the ten thousand. And with the resolution being in the mayor's name. So what we've got, you all have got to do is agree to, if you want us to continue to remain with. Sorry. We've got to get this taken care of. You all have a copy, you're pretty much following the past. If you look at that, and I don't see anything that we really need to change, just keep it the way they had it previously. My suggestion, but you all are the ones to make the decision. We've got to take that tonight. Needs to be.
Ma'am, don't you think we need to pay that whole car off?
It's got to be.
Right, exactly. Right, and that's what we're here for, you all to decide. Great question.
How on promotion that we paid the old credit card off?
Second that motion.
Motion has been made as second, at discussion. All in favor, roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion carries? Take it off? We got that taken care of. So, you still want to, would like to keep the card with Magnolia Bank, State Bank?
Off a motion that we keep the credit card with Magnolia State Bank?
Motion has been made, do I hear second?
Second.
Discussion? Motion has been made as second, all in favor, roll call. Y'all have it, all right, and they want, who they want cards assigned to and what limits? We've already got that, the ten thousand limit, so that's already taken care of, all right? So, you've already submitted, that you stated that you wish to cancel and submit payoff of the account, all right, so, that's taken care of. Thank you so much. All right, now we'll move forward to the new business. And our first item up for discussion is closeout of the twenty-twelve CDBG checking account.
I make a motion that we close the account out.
Motion has been made as second to close out the CDB twenty-twelve checking account. Any discussion? Roll call?
Aye.
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 Y'all have it. The next item is the renewal of the copier lease. And we desperately so need to get that squared away too, else we'll be out of business. Have y'all had a chance to look at it first? It's in your packet. Cliff Brown explained to me today, and she received this today saying, attach you at the bottom of this new release from Rico, for the City of Gordon, as soon as you get the signature from the mayor, please scan it, send it to me by email, so that I can continue processing this order. And she said, you might want to explain that.
I think it's a five-year lease, and the lease payments will be cheaper than they have been. Current lease is three hundred fifty a month, and this we're going into, I think it's two sixty, two seventy-eight per month. There's no upfront cost, we will get a brand-new copier. And I think it's another five-year lease on this human also.
The number of copies staying the same, I see it says thirty-five hundred and five hundred, three hundred.
Actually, I think they've upped it because we have really been going over our limited amount, but we've been having to pay extra charges for that.
And I tell you, it is, it may look, but we have so much paper, I mean, if you go back and look at the minutes, as she said, compared to what you've had in previous years, it's almost the manual, the minute manual has doubled its size. So, we have to take in consideration that it's apparently bona fide. So, motion has been made as second, is there any discussion, further discussion?
Ma'am, I have some discussion on that. I don't think it inside as it is, it doesn't conform to state law.
Pardon?
The lease agreement doesn't completely conform to municipal state law. Specifically, OCGA thirty-six sixty thirteen binding future councils.
Binding what then?
Future councils.
You talking about those that are coming?
That's correct.
So, I mean, what is that saying, binding them to what?
Well, this.
Excuse me, I would like to hear from the attorney, please, and not anyone else.
Specific agreement. There's some things that are, you know, we can work with, but this, this provision here specifically about, if you terminate any schedules provided above, which they do give the scheduled payments and breakout for a year, which you can't commit, it needs to be a little bit more specific that this contract terminates at the end of every fiscal year, it has to terminate by law at the end of every fiscal year, and it can be renewed. And it can be renewed automatically unless there's an affirmative action of the council, but this provision about.
What page are you on with that?
Last page two of two of the actual agreement. Top of the, top of the page is a section that says, the way that the council will do it is to have patches of the specific ordinance or resolutions then terminating the schedule. You know, that's fine, if the, the council actually, it has to be your decision that you agree with that, but then, if you terminate any schedules provided above, you may not purchase lease or rent during such fiscal period equipment performing functions similar to those performed by the product for a period of twelve months, section eighteen B, that's, that section's got to be stricken, because you're, you're binding, you could potentially be binding a council in twenty-twenty to that agreement, and that's against state law. In other words, in two thousand nineteen, they decided they didn't want that copy anymore, they couldn't get another one for a year.
Is that what they explained to you there, Cliff?
That's why I always sent it to them before we did, that's why I sent it to them.
Have y'all had trouble like this before with the copy? We've got.
We have issues like this with contracts with cities, because it doesn't always contemplate when you're dealing with a municipality, that, you know, contracts can only bind people indefinitely, and they're between private parties or businesses, but here you're dealing with an entity that can only be bound one year at a time, and that's, that's binding the council that has made that decision, and binding future councils.
What's your all's take, it's up to you all.
I make a motion we table this until the lawyers can get the terminology correct, so that we'll be legal.
Second motion. Motion has been made, second, any further discussion? Roll call? Y'all have it. Let you get Mr. Boone to check in today and get that with us, please. All right, our next item for discussion is Malden and Jenkins CPA. Mr. Miller Edwards, is he here? Right along, and counsel, I just want to say that I've met with him, and he's interested, and I've asked him to submit his proposal, and be it as, asked them, rather. He came to represent the firm Miller Edwards of Malden and Jenkins CPA. So, I've got an appointment tomorrow, just want to let you know that another firm will be coming, and as soon as they get the proposals, I'll get them to you all. Moving right along, we have Norfolk, item D, Norfolk Southern Houston, other depot for February twelfth. Donald Patterson and Chris Foxki have requested, so I'd like to take, make you all aware of that, I think in previous times past that you all approved of them to use the depot. So, I just want to bring that to you all's attention, that you want to continue to allow them to use it, or do we want to take a vote of the council? So, for court discussion.
We typically leave that up to the city clerk and assistant clerk to make those schedules out, we don't have any problem with that.
We've got a new council, y'all with that? Yes. All right, next on the agenda is the Georgia City Week, and we know that is for April nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, and I have some information packet here that I received, it's called Destination Downtown, and this is on behalf from GMA. They'd like to thank us for our participation in this statewide event. Your participation can help ensure the success of this program, which is now in its sixteenth year, and enclose the materials you may find helpful as you plan for your celebration. These materials are simply meant as a guide, you may vary or alter the activities to create a celebration of city government that is uniquely yours. They encourage us to participate in any way our city can, even if it's as simple as adopting the resolution recognizing Georgia Cities Week. This year, the kit also includes information on the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act, ADA. They would encourage us to consider incorporating some recognition of the civil rights milestone into our Georgia Cities Week activities. Links and ideas are provided under activities. In addition, there's information on joining GMA's Active Georgia Online Team Competition. And they say our city would probably want to compete to win prizes for the community, while individuals earn points that earn them individual rewards. Please consider joining that effort as well as hosting an event during Georgia Cities Week. Also, the generic word search can be modified to be specific to your city. If you would like to have a city-specific word search, please contact Amy Henderson at GMA, and she will customize this for you. You may reach Amy, and they have the toll-free number, and Amy will also provide additional posters, stickers, and the logo for reproducing if you need them. Thank you again for your participation in Georgia Cities Week. And that's Savannah Mayor Edna Jackson, Chair of Georgia Cities Week. And I have the information here. But if you all would like to look at it and be a part of it, I know you all have in the past, so, this will be placed in the city hall during that time. And that way you all. And while we're on Georgia Cities Week, I'd just like to note that with the, at the Georgia Mayor's Conference, Councilman Smallwood received how many years, hours of service and attendance?
Uh, how many meetings, I mean?
Right.
I can't even find it right now. Two hundred and four for that, but I have two hundred and five, I don't know exactly how many more I've got besides that two.
And he was honored at that event, it was well worth it, and seeing you, you know, on stage, and I think each and every one of us have got something, I know I did, from the ethics training, and it was a very good conference, and one of the better ones that I've attended, so we'd just like to say that, congratulations. No further business, with new business, I'd like to go ahead and we go into the committee reports. And we'll start with the police. Do I have anything, but Chief Hall is back there, he may have something, you have anything?
Everything good.
Everything's in good, okay. And that footage here, the way? Fire, Council meeting?
Everything doing well.
Wow, thanks. Streets, uh, the streets, everything's about the same. Mr. Lawrence and myself, we were supposed to go ride around on the streets, I didn't have a chance to do that yet, but we was talking about it today, and we're gonna try to get it done this week. I'd like to add to my street, well, they come and fill the potholes with red, I guess, and you know, I don't know a lot about streets, except they tell me that in the wintertime, it gets what, cold, and the cement, or what is it, that breaks up? But we, travelers on Westbrook Road, it needs to be, Mr. Superintendent, I rode by there today, and would you come forward, because it's, you know, some is, is leaving, the mud, I guess, what it is.
We, we put that temporary, we're gonna be doing asphalt, depending on the weather, hopefully tomorrow and Wednesday, to try to get most of the holes or patches that we need to get done this week, so, hopefully we'll be taking care of Westbrook and all the others.
Thank you, thank you, we all want to see. All right, and we know that at the moment, we water sewage sanitation finance leaves on. Counsel, do you all have anything else, further discussion, I don't have anything. All right, well, citizens? Yes, please.
The first, the last meeting was my first meeting.
Excuse, excuse me, would you please state your name?
I'm Emily Davis, I'm from Gordon, I grew up in Gordon. The last meeting was my first meeting, and ever concerned sitting, assisting as my opinion. I just want to say the last meeting was very disappointing to me, as a citizen of Gordon, it was very ignorant to me, and I feel like that's probably why no one wants to patronize our city. And growing up in Gordon, you know, we have a lot of things that I see that Gordon can be a lot better in, and instead of us coming to the meetings, basically coming from personal attitudes toward anyone, making, being worse than making it better, I feel like we should do what's best for Gordon. And a lot of people may not like the mayor, they may not like some of the councilmen, but we're not gonna get Gordon better if we don't respect our councilmen and our mayor. And that was just my opinion.
You may resume.
That's just my opinion, you know, I like, I would like to, Gordon have a lot of things that other cities don't have, we don't have a recreation center for the kids, we don't have a lot of businesses, we don't have anything for people to know about Gordon. Now, when people hear about Gordon, it's really embarrassing, it's not the way I'm proud to say I'm from the city of Gordon. So, my opinion is that I really hope that this year, we do very well, we bring a lot of businesses, we bring a lot of things to the city of Gordon, and come together as one, instead of not getting along and making things better, instead of making things worse, that's all I have to say.
State your name, please.
Donald Anderson. I've got a question for us, I heard about the water treatment thing, question to the point, is that what water say? Now, see, that's what she just was talking about, and I wasn't talking to you, I was talking to the.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Anderson had the floor. Counsel, what's your take, will we have, talking out of voice?
Will we have Mr. Lawrence, he's out for.
But I'm saying I was addressing the council, not an individual, okay? May I try to answer? Thank you, Mr. Eadie. Sure. Mr. Anderson, we test our water, you know, to the state law, exactly what it tells us by the EPD, you know, exactly what we're supposed to do. You know, and we send those samples off every month, they test them at a facility, I think it's in Macon, don't, don't quote, no, but I think we use a facility out of Macon, who's a lab testing, you know, facility, they test all of our samples, and they send us back the results of it and everything, and we get good results back on all of our water. And when the EPD came down, I think someone called them, they got them to come down and look around and everything. And when the EPD came down, I think someone called them and got them to come down and, and look around and everything. And they did find some things that they didn't like, what they saw. Leaks, you know, water leaks around some of the pumps and one of our tanks. We have two aeration tanks out of our main well, number three well, on the old Millisfield Road. That's our main water supply for the city of Gordon. That's where we get most of our water from. Several years ago, we found out that our water that comes out of the ground in all of this aquifer, all the way around, is a very low pH, it's like three point six, three point eight, coming out of the ground. They found out that one of the causes for it is got a carbon dioxide in the water. So what they recommended we do was put aeration tanks in, and we put a fan and a stir, and it actually bubbles out water, and it gets the carbon dioxide out. We put two big cement holding tanks in, and they're two halves, when they put, I'm, I'm gonna try to give you, you know, what, what's going on. They put them together, and they got pipes coming out, and over the years, those tanks continued to leak on a regular basis, you know. And they didn't like that because you losing, you know, your water and chemical and everything from that. About two years ago, maybe three years ago, we had a group that came in and looked at our tanks, and they put what they call a bladder inside that tank, it's like a high-density vinyl propylene-type liner, that they put in it to seal it up. When they put that liner in, it did pretty much stop the leak, but they didn't cut all the outlets and inlet pipe in it at the time, and we didn't know it for a, a good while. As we were adding the chemical and things, it started getting in between that liner, and it kind of separated that liner from the tank. So we're almost back to where we were at, you know. And we just found that out, you know, recently, you know, that that was one of the causes for that. Now, they gave Melvin, and we've seen it ourselves, I've seen the list that they gave us that needs to be corrected. So as we move into that stage of correcting all of those things, I think the EPD, EPD would come back and give us a recommendation that, you know, we've corrected them, but the water itself is in, is, is fine. We do check it on a regular basis, they tell us how many samples we have to send off, and we pick them randomly at different places so that that water is safe, yes, sir?
Oh, sir, appreciate that.
Best I can add, you're quick.
You did very well, thank you, sir. Next, next thing I want to say, the streetlights. Actually, the one right in front of my house, it was flickering, and now for the last month it's been out. I have reported it, but it's still out, it's dark. And the next thing I want, this is just a comment. This is, well, let me just say this. I moved to Gordon about fifteen, seventeen years ago, in nineteen ninety-seven. And I, I, I just want to say this, I moved here because I like the peace and the quiet. But I just want to say this now, I don't like people's stirring up stuff. Talking to me when I don't talk to them. I speak, and in this same year, I'm gonna be decent. But if I don't come in, to you, don't throw things at me, because you might not want to get started. We don't want to get started, we're here for conducting city business. And some things that we start.
Is that a threat? That sounds like a threat.
Some things that we start.
Excuse me, what's your name? Councilor? Are you the opposite charge tonight, or who's in charge? Councilor, what's your take?
No, no, she, she's in charge, I, I got this, she's in charge. And I, I say again, what I'm trying to say again is that it's all about peace and harmony, this is my first meeting. And I don't need citizens picking at me when I'm trying to address the council. Now, like I said again, sometime if you start something, it's hard to turn off. I didn't come here to start nothing with anybody. Now, I just want to say that, now, I want to say this too, I am also a honorably discharged disabled veteran. I know how to start and turn it off. So I don't want to go there, we don't want to go there, this is our home. This is where we're supposed to be alone. So what I'm just trying to say, I don't know what, this is my first time now, here, but I, I don't do that picking stuff, I don't play that thing, I don't teach my kids and my grandkids the picks. If I got the floor, they'll let me talk, I didn't say anything, sit here. That's the way the process is made. I don't have to like you, and you don't have to like me, but this is, this is the way the democratic process. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stevens.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I am also an honorably discharged veteran. And I, I want to just say, I'm glad you're coming, and I'm glad you're coming. But we've all been to every meeting, and that's a two-way street, you have to give respect to get it. There's been many times that we do not give respect, and we're talked to like we're dogs, and that's not, it doesn't go both ways. But I hope y'all keep coming, because if you come to everyone, you'll see what everybody's talking about, it's not just the citizens that are here. You'll find out for yourself.
Mayor, I have a question.
Uh, everybody, I'm just wondering, mayor, that's enough.
Mayor, I have a question, I just want to know, when you opened the council meetings to public comments.
Let me say this, journalist Bailey, I've entertained tonight, and we heard.
The two people you wanted to hear.
No, I didn't have no idea. Excuse me, I'm not going to address that, but is there, is there any further discussion?
I think Judith Schabell has spoken.
She's, uh, council, will you all continue to allow Ms. Robinson to talk out of order? She sat here the entire night.
I not said a word. I've been before, and I can prove it.
Excuse me, may I make a motion? Go ahead. We are joining you. Motion, do a jury, in second.
Allow people to start fighting another citizen, I did not say.
That was definitely a threat. He's good, man, he's great.